Let's call our, let's call our meeting in order.
Okay, we will start, we have limited agenda tonight, just two items. The, the twenty seventy-two change orders of the comments from, from planning and development services. As voiced by tonight, by good strong. Uh, and then we have a discussion of the, uh, use of T V D funds for the Tyree fantasy issue there. And so before we get to that, we'll have public comment, I guess, can actually be on any topic, it's a public comment. We'll see.
Are you not reading that correspondence?
Um, just on, um, on those topics, uh, yeah, I thought, I mean, you probably saw your, another people. I'm just gonna pull, come on, that's all the topics that are, are right there.
But you, you could, we gotta say that.
Yeah, you can talk, you can talk about it, as a public, public comment.
Yeah, well, um, I just wanted to know when, um, I sent a letter to P R C A C asking when they'll be reviewing, um, the garbage mandate, um, volume, uh, minimum level of service, seeing as the U T C is reviewing grades right now, and it would seem prudent that they could review our usage, um, and see if the ordinance needs to be changed. Cause I don't think the level of service is there for, uh, for what we're being charged for, and so anyways, I was asking when the P R C A C was going to review the, uh, the garbage mandate.
Okay, I do. Any other comment?
No. Yes.
Say it again.
My name is Kathleen McKenna, and, um, I would really like to start a petition or, you know, I'm here for the first time, because I'm really want to ban Roundup in this community using any weed killer, which is life-saving, and it's known as a horrendous killer, many things causing a lot of diseases for people. I don't think we need it in this community, we're not farmers, it's just to kill weeds, which does a lot of damage to that, so, um, we're just waiting for it, and we'd really like to be the first local community in Washington State to stop this.
Or anywhere we, 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 what that was back, eight years ago, had it banned with accounting for ditches. So they only dig, dig and, and weed, and whatever they do, uh, on the ditches, they used it on the ditches.
Yeah, but they can buy it here, and they put it in their gardens, go up the water. Yeah, but it just goes down and kills everything that touches it, it's through the air, then it rains, life saved. And it causes many, many diseases, and ever since the state started, like, you just think it always diseases start at the same time. Sure that everybody knows that from the ditches, but I would just like to be the first local community in Washington State to say no more. It's not necessary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, it seems as though there's construction going on at T S B to bring that building up to, uh, code. Wondering why there wasn't any mention of a permit review for them.
I don't receive that.
See, there's.
It's here.
Yeah, but I typically don't know what the individual permit is, so, oh, what kind of thing is it?
Well, the, any commercial building permit is supposed to be sent to the S committee for review by the community, them for the community, and, uh, so two other businesses recently have just had to have their permit reviewed here, and T S B did not, so I was wondering why, who dropped the ball on that one, not, uh, not that, I'm, I'm against anything, it's been making it, and got accessible, E D A ramp going in, limiting the, the access to the parking lot, uh, and whatnot, but.
Any exterior modifications?
Yeah.
The E D A ramp, and, uh.
Removing the golf road access.
Removing the one driveway, and I'm not sure what else they had to do in this kind of building, but that's where you can see drive by.
Yep.
Yep.
It's all driveway.
And one other comment, uh, the, uh, I was at the, the public hearing for the funds to the, uh, garden club for the notification of Tyree corridor there, and I was, I'm all for using a little bit of that money and everything, but I, I remember at that public hearing, they stated that they were gonna have, uh, it would come up every year, and they'd only approved ten thousand dollars, I believe that's all it was asked for, and.
Less than that, you were asking.
Yeah, but I think they went for ten, and it seems as though they approved on their own a higher dollar value.
Thirty K.
Right, but they only, at the public hearing, they only approved ten thousand dollars, and they stated that each year it would go, uh, before council again, and, and how if nobody asked for it to be increased, why is it increased, and, uh, I guess we found out, uh, a little bit of information as to why the accounting fees are so exorbitant, but, uh.
Who, who increased, who increased it when the thirty?
Don't know, but that's what.
Hi, Dad. The original amount approved for two thousand and eighteen was done in the June session, which they actually approved twenty thousand dollars, and then they made again in November to approve the budget for two thousand and nineteen, and that budget was approved for thirty thousand dollars in two, November of two thousand and eighteen for two thousand and nineteen. But yet the contractor who does the work has been told not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
Right.
But counting a council, the first one was approved for twenty thousand, for, for the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. The budget that was approved by county council for the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen stays to thirty thousand dollars, but the contractor has been told not to exceed ten thousand dollars because of the change in bid process and everything else. So again, it's just confusing, why does county council approve a higher amount of weed?
My guess is it's just a pure guess, us hearing it for the first time, because they know that the exorbitant fees. They would have counted fees lower than that, now they want to take out of it, and say, but it's thirty. But anyway, that's.
Probably worse.
Yes.
Well, I, I can tell you that when we were working on the, uh, lighting at, uh, at us park, they, uh, the way here the process works is that they would definitely go to the, to the council for a lot more money than what they were guessing, uh, public works would actually need, and that way, because they can never go over a number. That was the least, well, it was explained to me from public works, and they can never go over, so give a bigger number, but they don't ever seem to go up to that number, it's just, you know, save a net, I don't know. But that's what I was told, like, but when it's, when it's our funds, they should be reaching back to us to say, we're looking at increasing this amount, or is the amount adequate, or if we should, this community should be, being asked before they just raise the amounts, or, you know, charge, charge the accounting fees.
It's lovely they're only charging us a thousand dollars a year for their, their accounting on the garden jobs, where they're collecting over four hundred thousand dollars, and they make that up six times through the year, and they're also acting as collection agent, and, and that's only getting charged at a thousand. Why is the, the five thousand, six thousand dollars for the garden clubs being?
Beating out of that.
Yes, thank God, we, we only got charged a thousand dollars for their accounting on the garbage item, but how did that sweetheart deal work out for a lot more accounting?
That's been nine hundred and fifty seven dollars and fifty cents. But yeah, it's, it's criminal to make things all much for the garden money.
Was that a one time, the council?
Once a year.
Once a year, cause they're giving a council on us, that's one every month.
Well, I don't know if they're, no, they, they have to, in, there's six invoices that come from Canby, and maybe more because of the, when, or there's other bills that have to be processed with county. I guess that's public works that they're doing their garbage item, but Canby, I believe, submits six times a year.
Any other public, public comments, but a public comments period of our discussion. Okay, well, in that case, we could move on to, uh, review of proposal changes to twenty seventy-two. Yeah, we got it already, but.
Uh, so, uh, last month, uh, David forwarded me your guys' recommendations for an annual twenty seventy-two, and I took your notes and kind of put it into, made the changes in the code, so, so we could kind of see what was going on. And then, um, passed that around to a bunch of different staff who all have things to define, and then we met and went over everything, so, these, these are kind of not just my comments, they're everyone's comments, and we all read them fine. Um, in general, most of them seem to work, um, with the exception of a couple that I pointed out. Um, and that's the one about allowing motor vehicle repair, uh, washing, storage uses in the downtown yard, which, I think doesn't, it doesn't seem to meet the policies of your sub-area plan. So, as I said in my memo, that doesn't mean that it can't be done, but you'd have to do a correct amendment to the sub-area plan, I think, to, in order to do those things. Does that plan lays out what, what you're trying to achieve, and I think, I understand that that plan is outdated and old, and a lot of people don't agree with it, a lot of people still do agree with it, but there's gotta be some, you know, community discussion about, all right, we want to change this plan.
If you can't have a code that violates.
Okay, I think a code has to be consistent with the, with the plan. Oh, and then the other problematic one was allowing more than one storage unit on lots that don't have a primary use, I pointed that out. And it's not only that we, that's not found throughout the county, but, um, primarily from our public works, but people in our building, public people, said that we've, they've had too much history of people converting those into kind of temporary living quarters, you know, the kind of, somewhere or other down, um, and then take your RV someplace else, you know, for the, for the winter, coming for the summer, or for the winter. So it caused a lot of problems, um, so they weren't very keen on that. That doesn't mean you can't propose that, and go to the planning commission and everything, but that might be one that our department doesn't support.
Okay, we discussed the, can you jump in here? Yeah, well, okay, uh, we discussed possibly that, um, somebody's in Boston, says, well, you could change, make the code more explicit, like thou shall not connect the two sheds, you go, that's one thing.
Well, in fact, we're actually already doing that through the other amendment process, not just for here, but for everywhere.
Okay, so it's possible to make the code change, and I saw, in my other review, you were saying that most of the violations seem to be people who have empty lots, a lot of.
Right, but they bring their RV here, and then, you know, the, but, they come, they show up for the summer and live in their units.
So our proposal could be, um, uh, two sheds, only on lots with permanent houses for residents.
Well, if you have a primary use there, you can have many storage units if you want, so.
Well, only one two-hundred square foot, one will come to them, and that's really what the code is about, adding a second two-hundred square foot without a permit.
That's an interesting twist, okay?
Yeah, that was kind of what we were trying to say, and it made me get lost in all the, the, yeah, and, and originally, I just threw out the idea one time, well, how about corner script, but then, uh, um, I believe you and Nick, and I think Susan both of them both called me, Chris, and, oh, wait a minute, that's problematic, because the, the, the code for human state is pretty clear about when a building permit's needed, and so maybe the way they can address this is to allow two two-hundred square foot that don't need a building permit. Not one, not one that's bigger, not one that's four hundred, so two two-hundreds, and, uh, Susan, most of the big thing was, don't, you know, can't put them connected together and all that kind of stuff, so, um, the debate, I guess, is Canby had a code that allows for all of that, because the principle that I think we're trying to say here, and, and anyway, it was approved to do two for businesses, right, but what puts like that as residents is basically oriented lots. It is, uh, the principle is, is that there's a big group up in the office about mini storage and, and all that kind of storage and mixed work, and, um, this is a way to relieve some of that pressure on businesses and on everyone, uh, and so it has a business and personal interest with my brothers. So it sounds like a good idea, and, you know, just push back on it, and that's, why would you push a little bit?
All right, so I will look into whether, whether that's, you know, whether it can be non-permitted, more than one non-permitted, etc., etc. I, my guess is, yeah, but you seem to have a different opinion as most other issues.
There is a final, a final.
Right, yes, yes, that sounds like a very, very compromise, so there are empty lots and people with RVs, cause one of our ideas was to allow them two for people with RVs, but now, anyone can have one, and every lot can have one, so there's nothing else on the lot, but you put an RV on it, it gets a little, it gets more compromised, I guess we know.
Um, and then you had questions about, um, repealing the parking restrictions, and I ran that past the public works, and I think it's absolutely not. Basically, um, because, uh, one of them just came up, I guess, it just got implemented a year or so ago, and the other ones, they, they all came from this group, and they're, they're, they said, there's really no room to allow parking out some of these areas, safe parking over the fog line, because there's ditches and all that.
What do you mean, what's a fog line?
The white square.
The white strip. So you can never park on a light strip, no matter what?
You, you're supposed to be parked over it, otherwise you're in the.
Oh, only, only if the white on fog lines wide enough for a car is it permitted, is that what you're saying?
That is shoulder.
Shoulder, if you're wide enough on the car, on the other side of that white line.
Okay, so here on, on Gulf, we, we, we have, we have a white line, and we don't have curbs. Okay, yeah, so, yeah, then, okay, um, if the car can get completely past the white line, it's okay.
Well, I think the issue came back from, I mean, I'm, about this part, about Gulf, it was also having the pedestrian aspects of.
Right, the, the three specific areas where there is no parking by code was due to trying to make it safe walking areas.
For pedestrians and myself, which I think we want to keep, but, but we were, we were debating this a little bit, I am personally, like, an ounce, and anybody, we have an idea, and one thing is, if they have our specific streets, like Gulf, then we could make a proposal that might even include, uh, requiring, you requiring other things of those roads in order to legit, but the point is, is that, uh, that people are parking on the street or Gulf Road all the time anyway, you know, and I can see, like, on my street, I heard from the, the fire marshal, there's no parking on my street, and it's very narrow and steep, a ditch on one side, and a steep yellow, um, foot, foot road, and dangerous little hill on the other side, and there's really no room, so almost everyone except me, who happens to have a garage, um, is, uh, is illegal, it's illegal parking, you know, and the fire marshal will give you tickets if you're, you got your ass out of the water, yeah.
In general, they're not really looking for this kind of.
Right.
Just if it's a problem.
Although my neighbor was the fire marshal, so. I heard it, heard it from him, yeah, so, um, um, well, I think that we could try to come up with a proposal for which I, I, I think the committee would enjoy hearing that, your counter saying, well, okay, on those streets, well then, can we do this, then, this?
Yeah, and so it might be a good idea to draw some little drawings, take some pictures of what it looks like, all that kind of stuff, and I, I, I really work with public works, I mean, I can help facilitate that, but they're all to help say it's, it's their code and it's changed stuff.
Right.
And I think in our request, we, the only issue that was even of a current road, wasn't it, was a stuff like Gulf, like, the other one was a road that, yeah, there's a dead. Where it don't exist anymore, so we call it restrictions, another person repeating the code could be.
I also found one, one code that, or one working area, which it, the, the road doesn't exist at all anymore.
That they have words for that one?
It was, uh, front street, front street, he, he resolved the word of the car.
They gave.
They gave, okay, I was thinking science fiction, you know, to dissolve it somehow.
Um, all right, so with that, that overview, um, you want to just go through, go through them in order?
Yeah, I'll start with it.
All right, um, so one of the questions you did have was, uh, you know, and it's about, like, the comment this gentleman had earlier, that you don't feel you're getting all the permits to review that you thought you would, um, and, you know, at this point, we, according to our permitting people, they, they send you the ones that, that the design guidelines or the code, the front overage code would apply to, but if there's nothing that is covered by those things.
We, we probably, we probably have to agree, they're, they're reactive.
Sorry, I'm looking at your face.
He does it off the top of mind, yeah, I remember a few years ago, that was entirely internal, we were building down the street.
It's been schizophrenic, basically. And they said, it was all internal?
They said it was entirely internal.
Yeah, yeah, Alison described the project.
There's new design guidelines that need to be met in any key manner of form, it was strictly interior, three walls, or.
And then improvement stuff.
I didn't convert it to basically create a closet inside of the building, so I think that's why Tess is looking at it, that one had zero review required, but yet the one just further down the road had review requirements that actually do go through the character line because it's exterior, you know.
And then you're now running further up the road that the project never came here, so.
Right, so it just kind of seems like, one that has good design guidelines, they can come here, but one that didn't have any design guidelines, they can't.
Which, which, what was the name of the one that didn't, that did have design guidelines, ramifications?
The fourteen eighty Gulf Road, uh, building here, the.
But they got that on, oh my God.
Well, that would get backwards.
The one that didn't count is fifteen seventy-four Gulf Road.
And I know Nick sent you an email about all those that you questioned.
Yeah, but let me, let me say something to that, is that, that Nick did get back to us, and, um, with, uh, the, the changing, I'll do a man call for peer C and C, I was not a member of the plan, but, um, basically the ball got dropped, um, Nick tried to get it through and couldn't get, and I guess, uh, the, the, the two previous chairmans couldn't quite do it, of the whole email chain that we have of it, and, um, I did not expect to hear that answer, or that, that report, that I could get a very clear answer from Nick, and so I think that, uh, between us, and it was not the county's fault, it's, it's this community's fault.
I, I know Nick tries, and that's probably why you get one that they don't apply to, because he's afraid that.
Now, yeah, cause it's a hundred and twenty days, the deal is that we get thirty days, although we're doing a lot faster than thirty days to review a building permit, but he gets by state law, Nick or, or the planer, a hundred and twenty days to give an answer to the challenge for the building permit, you know, and that's just there because of many other problems that we have to deal with, so, um, a hundred and twenty days escaped, and Nick approved it, so, so even though, uh, Fred's boys at Chevron told Judson, let's take both stories straight, twice, oh, no, no, no permits necessary. So, whatever, it's an internal thing, not, you know. So, okay, so we're giving two stories, yeah. Yeah, that's it, yeah, okay, thank you.
Um, so it, it doesn't appear that we need to amend that code for what, what it is you want, unless things that don't apply to the code, or the presenting, or.
Yeah, we, I already did it carefully through our conversation, and it, it's just a hundred percent about exterior. It's just, I was really looking for any words that might make a difference, and that will have the modify, and that's what the committee's about, right? And so, um, I, I, I think, uh, do you think we need to boil it, I think we thought we didn't need to, obviously, well.
All right, on that O five O permitted uses, you guys wanted to move hotel, motels and timeshare condominiums there, um, and your notes are a little confusing, I said put them under conditional uses, but it was shown under, um, permitted uses, talking of David, your intention was for them to be under permitted uses.
In, in the resort commercial, I think.
Yeah, in the resort commercial, yeah, um, but they're already allowed there in the resort commercial, if they're fewer than sixteen units. Uh, if they're more than sixteen units, it's allowed at the U P.
I think, I think the rationale, and the reason why I'm trying to replace it, was to create the conditional use option in the other areas, and to, and just declare, and leave this line, essentially, I think it was just to create that, that dichotomy between an area where it's permitted, and then a, other, other areas like this works.
So you're trying to find the other areas besides resort commercial area.
It's because in twenty seventy-two under conditional uses, it says in all zones, hotels, motels and condominiums shall be a conditional use. So it was removing the conditional use on resort commercial zoning for those uses. Cause under twenty seventy-two under conditional uses, it's a conditional use in the resort commercial area, and it was to remove that from there.
Right, that is permitted, outright permitted.
In these times, any, any. I added sixteen inches, because that's what the standard area said.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was to make it, to clarify it, or reenter it, I'm confused with how it was before now, that it was still, is permitted, or is still permitted in resort commercial, but it's conditional still in most other areas where it is.
Okay, so the term you used, the, the word you put in there was outside of the resort commercial district, but that's everything, I mean, rural district and everything else, so theoretically, they can go anywhere. And so that didn't seem right.
The language factors.
Well, I don't know.
So if you want to allow them in areas other than resort commercial, you might want to figure out where those areas are.
Was it here? Okay, so basically.
Yeah, there was a discussion about, well, should we allow hotels, motels in small town commercial?
Right.
And it does seem reasonable, so we don't want conflict, okay, so we're gonna change, so we're gonna, the conditional use would be small town commercial, and the permitted use would be resort.
So, uh, let me just reiterate, so make sure I got it better, what you're trying to get to is allowing, uh, resort hotels and motels in, in the small town commercial with, no, regardless of size, just as a permitted use. Well, cause your notes said make them a permitted use, so.
In the, in the. I think that was a mistake.
It's permitted in resort commercial.
Yeah, permitted in resort commercial. No, sixteen.
Very, yeah.
So that, but you're saying we only have sixteen in resort commercial.
It's a conditional use in resort.
And a conditional use to go beyond sixteen, so we already have that.
No, they believe it speaks that it's conditional use no matter what.
In resort commercial, so even a sixteen or a is, which is allowed by standard code, is a conditional use in resort commercial.
I'm a.
Under twenty seventy-two, so basically, we're just saying, in resort commercial.
In resort.
We want it to go to just standard code for resort commercial.
Okay, so in R C, sixteen or any three units permitted use, sixteen, seventeen or more, as a conditional use, but also allow the same thing in S T C?
Conditional in S T C.
For any size?
Yeah.
All right. I think so, but let me take notes.
Even though I agree with David, I think sixteen rooms, whether it be in resort commercial.
So I think the way to address that is because it was just a kennel and they might have two hundred dogs kennel there. Yeah, I think everybody would hear of. If that's what it takes.
You have doggy hotels or something.
I got it all with Canadian.
Why, I think too, the, um, uh, it's taking the noise and all that. Um, uh, the, the business that was thinking about doing something here was a dog grooming business. So I keep a dog overnight, like if you're moving to that. So, um, so the other source of breeding.
Right, I think the, the way to address that was maybe if you want to include pet grooming, say pet grooming with up to, you know, can kennel up to six dogs a night or something like that.
Okay.
You know, where you're limiting it to something small. If, if you really want to, if the business got away, the person wanting to do it has got away, I, I don't know. But, so that's a thought. I just, I imagine, I mean, when I kennel my dog, there's two hundred other dogs there and it's out in the country, but it's loud.
I don't really have any particular interest in having a dog kennel. It was only just to try not to over the possibility of a dog grooming business.
We need to get more specific with the language so you don't get the big one up the little.
No, it's a little better than. I would say it would be daytime use.
Yeah, a few years ago, when we were working with the attorneys and the hearing exam and all that, I spent hours reading about this big fight over a dog kennel somewhere over the county. And they spent two years opening up like, yeah, I mean, finally, the kennel law, but it was way too noisy for all the members.
No, they're a big deal. A lot of people come out against us. This is limited to cats.
Oh, but, uh, 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 pet days bar?
Um, and then on the, uh, uh, facilities for service repair or, or commercial storage, again, that's one of the ones that, um, I don't think meets the, uh, the policies of your suburban plan. So I don't think it could be moved in there now.
The big arm of the next two are, uh, two.
Oh, silver. One fifty-four, two and three.
Yeah.
They don't meet the suburban plan. So if you want to go through the process of redoing your suburban plan or modifying it, then, you know, theoretically do something like that, but right now it's not being consistent, I think. And the whole point of comprehensive plans and suburban plans is so that your rules can't change really nearly with somebody coming in and saying, I want to do this because that's how it used to be in the good old days, right? I know in the sixties and stuff. And we didn't want to do anything. Get the code changed like that. So comp plans are supposed to kind of put a, a caution to that and make it work possible.
Well, what's another part of the idea too is that, okay, that it was a little unfair, whatever, just go pro versus all small town commercials? To make a uniformity or anything else for that?
I don't think that was defined very hard by patients, but I think.
That was one of them.
Oh, yeah, that conversation.
Well, I mean, if, if we actually go down the road that we talked about, I mean, I've made the report with, um, with the consultants trying to help idea of what we actually want now, that would be a more appropriate time to, to change a suburban plan possibly and then make these changes.
Absolutely, yeah. I think that's the plan.
And maybe not, right, or maybe not in this round, but not until they're done fast enough.
Okay, um.
The, our, our new parts that happened, that didn't raise that at the same time, other than, other than they were additional, I think.
Yeah, yeah, I think that one's already there, wasn't it?
That was, I think it was, uh.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Uh, next one is on three fifty, and this, this one applies to a lot of you. Wanted to get rid of the phrase.
Oh, right.
That follows adopted by reference and we cannot do that. This, I don't know why, we did something really stupid several years ago, and that was in reaching a, kind of settlement agreement on a, on our rural element, a challenge to our rural element. For some reason, we agreed to adopt into our comp plan certain regulations that theoretically help protect rural character. So every time we amend those sections of code, we have to do a comp plan amendment at the same time. So those notes are just there to remind people, oh, yeah.
So I, I could be wrong. I, I thought we thought it was a voluntary character plan.
Yeah, we did. That's exactly.
So we, we had, we had no issue with being added. We misunderstood what it.
No, we, we thought it meant the character plan, supposed to the comp plan. That's an odd issue.
So CPWCTP.
CPWCTP is a common fine.
Okay, yeah, otherwise it'd be.
I know, CP.
The only thing that was, I think, that's an odd issue, the one that we were intent on was, instead of small town commercial, always referring to golf, rather than the small town commercial, was small town commercial. And include all small town commercials.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I was changing two oh four.
Yeah, and, and three fifty, you've done that. You've gone through and scratched out a bunch of road names and stuff, but I know it should have been, we had.
Well, I also allow, uh, the density of building that was permitted in golf could now be permitted on small town, which is only not a thousand feet, but point hours, so it's pretty limited. Still, it makes it more fair and easy to understand.
Um, and let's see, oh, and that's where I said you just put the setback for your storage containers.
Yeah.
Um, in four hundred, after the, the long golf road thing like you're suggesting, like substantive one, which is going to be.
When you're on the high. Four oh one?
No, or not, oh, four oh one?
Yeah, four hundred, four oh one, uh, we crossed out on one road.
Yeah, 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 that's, yeah, except all the ones where you cross out, but there's no problem.
Okay.
Yeah, six fifty-three is the next substantive ones, and we've kind of talked about them already under screening. Uh, so dumpster and utility areas shall be screened pursuant to eight, you know, twenty eighty, three fifty-five. There's already some standards in there. And then commercial storage, your vehicles, trailers and truck containers, as I read earlier, shall be screened to, from certain areas to certain places.
Did we, did we cross out, uh, businesses or the use?
I mean, it.
Yeah, so.
Well, I don't, yeah.
I think we did.
I, I just cross, I cross that.
Okay, that would now apply, that would be by.
Yeah, I mean, who else has dumpsters besides?
Well, I'm a lot closer to utility area, it's like, it's about the utility area. Right, am I catching?
Um, now where you put your, like, if you have.
Dumpster generator or?
Generators or, you know, a lot of businesses will have their electrical boxes out there in that.
But this is, it's really, so it is pretty much mainly commercial properties.
Right, I mean, both, single family.
If they're like, yeah, I think they're, they're in their commercial business aspect, there's a state business.
And is utility area just a state definition? Well, because what it said was dumpster and utility areas of, and other, other use, it said in other use buildings and that.
I must say, Mark.
Yeah, I had no idea what that meant.
I guess if they remove that part, you're looking at a set, but if you have different businesses, uh, I'm sure it'll work. I don't know, that's weird. Anyway. I'm not sure where that comes from.
Well, I would think even if, if you say a public building, why doesn't this thing have a, thank you, Mark. I would think even more.
Is there a term, is there a term commercials or, um?
Institution.
Yeah, commercials.
I might have a discussion about institutional buildings.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I just don't know if individuals can worry that, that, that may not be issued at all in the world, but people could be put there, or they might put them out for some reason, I guess. And I'm honestly sure this community will be able to, uh, should build it.
Richly.
Keys, James, there almost.
But I, I have, but you, if we include businesses, if you want to include businesses and institutions.
And so charging stations.
Generators, one of the, we still want to, we need propane.
Well, that's, yeah, nobody's got propane tanks on those.
Well, I can put back in there commercial and institutional.
And why does safety work with safety, for example? Because, yeah, because.
Typically, that's what people screen to, but, um, if you guys wanted to do it.
I, I believe it has to do with fencing. Any, you can build a fence up to six foot, but if you want to go over, you have to herd it and have an engineer and then.
So we're going to delete utility, is that what we decided? Oh, no, here, I'm doing it. You're leaving more of your.
Commercial and institutional.
Back and back, in the right of business. Yeah.
Just that is.
Okay, and then these last, well, this next ones, um, about tree permits.
It's from, from.
Yeah, this, this wasn't something you guys had talked about, but last year we amended, uh, the code for the, the, the only other places where people, where there are rules about removing trees is in our watershed, so around, uh, uh, Lake Waco, Patton, um, those places. You guys are the ones that have rules about trees otherwise. Um, and what we realized is it doesn't, it never really said, I mean, it says you can't take them out, but nothing said, you know, or, and if, if you submitted for a permit, then you have to apply for these, but nothing said you couldn't take them all out ahead of time and then come in and create a permit. So that made no sense. And so we're just suggesting that if you do want to better regulate that, then we have to say, well, you actually need a tree, a permit to take out these trees, even if you're not applying for.
I was just thinking about this before we approved this.
So if, and if you guys don't want to touch it, we don't have to. It was just a suggestion from us.
But it does make it more uniform to, or fair, you know, there's only one, Waco and Lincoln, you know, the gardens, you know, and, and Patton and.
And, and.
So four.
Oh, three. Yeah, you guys are the only, you guys are the only area that's got a watershed protection overlay district. So, so for our lakes, we have a lot, a lot of rules to, to minimize stormwater runoff and all that, right, uh, keeping trees is one of the best.
Is tree damage actually equal tree?
Um, in general, in, in our code, there's a way to amend what the tree damage is, so it's more. It's, yeah, it's not so much the number of trees, it's how much, keeping greeners, you know, soaking.
Right. The tree's at your tops already, it's funny. There's your tops in the counter.
So, you know, if you guys don't want to touch your tree rules, that's fine, we can take all this stuff out, but, um, I'd like your, your thoughts about it and what you thought about it a little bit more. Same thing with the tree, the hazard tree removal, because of, um, inserting the, the language about needing a tree removal permit, we have to have it out if there's hazard trees, somebody has to be able to get rid of those trees quickly themselves. That's just what that.
And that seems to make a lot of sense, but. Because it really, really wasn't going to fight for it. As I was always told, everyone has a right to take out a hazard tree. Did we not have that right before, and this is probably what you do for that? It's making it easier to get around other rule. If we adopt the other rule, only this rule can make it.
Right.
Easier. For that hazard provision.
And frankly, I mean, we don't go around looking for people taking hazard trees, but if somebody calls on their neighbor, this, you know, this person's taking down a whole bunch of trees where they're not supposed to, and, and we let them, and say, oh, yeah, they're all hazard trees. Well, how do they know they're hazard trees? Okay, so we have rules about what a hazard tree is and how you go about doing that.
Well, I was gonna say, to remove more than a certain percentage of trees regardless across Waco County, you require a land service permit.
If you, yes, if you're clearing a bunch, yeah.
So a permit is required. If you're going to go and remove a section of trees, you can't legally go do it without a permit.
Right, well.
So the tree retention is to check some balances, and if you want to go clear a third year lot, that exceeds the land service per footage, meaning you have to go get a land service permit. Already, so to me, that just seems redundant.
I'm not sure about that. If you're just cutting trees, it says moving dirt, land service is dirt. You're just cutting some trees and you do not.
No, because if you exceed a certain number of trees, you actually require a permit because you have to say what you're doing with the wood, where it's going, if it's getting haulled out.
Yeah, that's, that's a state permit you need then.
Right, so there, there are overlapping rules, which prevent someone from going in and clearing half an acre without a permit.
But last year, we had somebody on Lake Waco move in and remove a whole bunch of nice big trees right along the waterfront. Everybody had, I mean, people had this, so we had to tighten up our rules.
I'm not sure that's like that.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think that, that this was voted on by taxpayers, and, but it was really kind of glossed over in my opinion. And there's other firsts, it may would kick in on that, so maybe we should defer to deciding to keep or eliminate.
Yeah, I, I don't expect you guys to act on it here as the man, I just, I mean, well, if you want to. I'm trying to explain it in discussions so you all better understand, and then you can.
That was the point. Yeah, I think one, when I read this, I mean, I read definitions somewhere else of what I, what it actually qualifies as a hazard tree.
There are, in, in the definition section of the catchment. In fact, we had, we had to amend that because of this case too. We had to really beef up all our rules about trees. All right, parking's the next one, six fifty-nine.
All right. And this one, you're, you're too likely confused about.
Yeah, it was a little, David cleared it up for me, um, and so it sounds like we were trying to allow, like, you know, a small business to use, somebody else's big parking lots might not be.
No, that wasn't what we were trying to do. We were trying to say that our current rules said that you had to put your parking in the back.
Right.
And somehow, and sometimes, and the story is sometimes that requirement can cause the business, the whole project not to be, well, it's not because you might have seven, many, three, seven in the back, yeah, and now you have to know where to put your parking because of the best plan.
All right, so if you were to, you're not trying to have off-site parking, that's a lot easier than just somewhere on the side.
We want to do that too.
We were also looking, we were also looking to talk about off-site parking, particularly on Belt Road, and when we, yeah, when we talk about this, I mean, and, and I agree with what Cliff said about the off-site parking, but, um, you know, you don't have parking on Belt Road because of the bottom line, because we want to let people walk. Well, we want to let people walk, why can't they park somewhere and walk to your store instead of having to park in front of your store? So, I mean, you can't have it all.
Yeah, parking, parking's always one of the biggest issues in any community, and always that and science, because everybody's an expert on parking and science.
I, we had a discussion that some gangs somehow, but as far as the development of, uh, redevelopment of downtown, small town commercial, and it would be good to have a common parking, you have to buy a lot, have to create an authority to own it, however it works.
Yeah, that's what I see, that's a, that's a, maybe with the transportation benefit, just pick the, use those parts to try to do something. Maybe, anything that's off the road is no, because you're on the road, pretty much.
Okay, I, I don't, I mean, that must be, that'd be, that'd be good, but we see unfortunately envelopes.
Especially if you don't know your money, don't they?
Okay, so.
I'll work here with the language way to get it off. Well.
Our language there comes as a.
So I, I, I think I would want to amend this, um, a little bit based on what I understand now, that you're not looking for off-site. I mean, there might be a case for it, but based on the meantime, because I feel a lot.
I'll probably say off, bit alternate off-site parking.
Right, that, that, yeah.
Yeah.
Perfect, that solves that one. And then that was it?
Okay.
Any other questions you need?
Can I ask a question? I'm a little confused. If there's no parking on Belt Road, every time I get an event at the community section, the parking lot is not big enough to hold everybody who wants to come, and so people park on Belt Road and there's no place else to park. Are we saying that, if you look?
Yeah.
Here, I'm.
Right, about the last five, six hundred feet of.
After, I want to go around the curb, I think, somewhere around.
Yeah, there's a small little section at the curb, but it's not very big, because there's a measurement that goes from basically from Marine Drive this way, and then there's a measurement that goes from Tye this way, there is a very small section, which is basically kind of the curb where the wine store used to be, where the water was now. There's a small little section there that doesn't count.
So there's an issue of uniform, and, and from, uh, so our campaign, the cadence fees, that's all legal to park on the street. Second question, has it ever been?
Oh, on one side.
From one side, so it's been seen, but nobody's even been given a. A lot of questions, question, has anybody ever been? I think, I think, I think, I think people have a dignity more for getting out, for not parking over the phone.
Oh, come on.
For really properly parked illegally. I don't even have that name for it. I mean, lots, lots of those parks, I think they would like to park there right now. I, I would, I would, I would keep, whether it's an apple or a flower. I mean, my objection would really be more that even though it's in the code, if somebody like the sheriff doesn't want to, for the county, doesn't want to do the sheriff, doesn't want to be part of there, I would demand no parking signs, uh, so that the public probably knows. In the latter, so in the latter of those signs, I would say, how come more than anyone here is supposed to know if they aren't allowed to imply this stuff? What's that? How contest that? Right, right, right. But anyways, so, so the, the answer seems to be, yes, it is illegal, but fortunately the sheriff doesn't seem to.
Yeah.
Fortunately that, thus, there's probably some, you know, if you, if there's a fire in one of these buildings, and the fire trucks come, and they can't get access to the building because, or can't park close enough because of people parked there, I can imagine if you were lighting tickets, passing the back, so you just speed up our attempt to do some firefighting, but in short, but short of that, it probably won't ever come up. As a part of a code, not just take.
Did I just miss the section, did we cover the reduce setback on Tye in your, the song commercial?
I think you didn't have any issues there in, uh.
Okay. Yeah, no, we did the ten feet, it's now.
Reduced, yeah, it was a small, just a small town commercial, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we heard it, yeah.
And, and basically.
Okay, I have one thing.
Yeah, three fifty, three fifty.
I just have a quick question. If we wanted to have a ten-bed, um, um, rest of center here for facility here at Point Roberts.
Like a motel?
Uh, no, rest of or, um, hang, or, or.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, there.
Oh, oh, oh.
Yeah, color care or, or healthcare or whatever.
Like a home, a home, a home care center or something?
Yeah, it's the care, it's a rest of, but putting the, um, patient in this, this home for unlimited care. But they would be ten, ten rooms. Where in Point Roberts can we do that?
I will have to go and research that, because I, I'm pretty sure they're allowed in most places.
But given all the restrictions that we have for setback and wetlands.
Would it be building a new one or?
Right, yeah.
What's that?
Right, yeah.
And this is a very, it's very weird.
Yes.
Why don't you give me your name and number, and I'll research it and. Figure it out.
Is there a question, is this not a hotel? And it's not.
No, no, it's a, it's a home.
Kind of fits.
Care facility for whoever needs, which would be.
Stay in here.
Yeah, that would be on here, it would be right here. And elsewhere, you can always go to, unfortunately, if you want to pay to go get a, uh, conditional use and get the hearing exam and agree with it, you can put almost anything anywhere, unfortunately, if, if there's some restrictions. Yeah, you know, if, if, again, if the community comes together on an idea, either if you love it or you hate it, it can really affect these decisions, you know, and that's, that's our C D B.
So before I go, I'll make sure your name and number. Okay, so I, I'll take this back with, on those couple of issues where I have a better understanding of what we did, I'll clean up the language of where we deleted stuff and be added, that kind of stuff, to make it pretty even to set it back.
Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
So we owe the public works a parking proposal sometime.
Yeah, if you really want to delve into that, I'd, I'd put together kind of a little study of some sort with maps and pictures of what it looks like and all that stuff, and, and who you want to talk to, Joe Tan, he's the county engineer, he has to approve all that stuff.
Well, that's a wrong question. Under, um, conditional use, um, point one, five, six, four, number five, um, more than two forty years or similar in a country, sort of unit, et cetera, to a permit, et cetera.
Yeah, right.
Um, how many can someone have, like, three or, they have ten, or would.
How many what?
How many do they have up to? Is there a limit or?
No limit here, I mean, you guys, more than just a board two, so.
That's a good point.
I don't know what this word, what is saying, you guys, like twenty-five minutes fifteen, or is that not really?
I don't know, it's probably, uh.
Maybe it's first.
Yeah, it's first, yeah, okay.
So David, I should be able to get this cleaned up and get gotten back to you by tomorrow, probably, but I'm in a day tomorrow. And then that will give you a chance to get that, you guys can have another meeting on it.
Yeah, I'll pull that back and.
Yeah. And the man of, of the unpermitted two hundred square foot ships, in two of those.
Yeah.
I'll have to break your butt, I'll have to build my own second one on the ground. So was, was, um, he, when I was over there visiting, you guys, I, I came to the realization that, oh, okay, there are multiple parks here, including legal park. So how hard is it to get, to wrangle everybody to actually focus on that?
Well.
You know, politically, I don't want to get in trouble.
No, 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 it usually takes me two weeks to get a meeting together, especially if there's more than six people, you know, six or more. Because everybody's got to fill it for at least two weeks.
Yeah. What happened?
That's, that's usually what takes the longest of all this.
Very good. Okay.
Real done, or, or am I excused, or you're gonna continue, or?
Yeah, excuse.
I'm now before you.
Excellent.
You're welcome.
I hope we learned this in the last week about.
Well. So with respect to the dispersal of the T V D funds for these, uh, county administration, uh, they sent us a breakdown of what they did and how much it cost and how many hours were involved, um, in a sense, it works out to about seventy-five dollars an hour, it seems, they're charging for seventy-five or seventy-six dollars an hour, uh, for the work that they're doing, um, in preparing the contract. It was initially a fair bit, uh, between the way that, uh, time involved to establish the contract with the contractor, because the contractor, um, wasn't registered on the yellow high website. The contractor is operating out of the garage and county offices to deal with things like that. We here in the county office, of course, part, um, but the county in doing the contracts, they want to be able to have all of this. So there's some time involved in, in setting up the letter of understanding. That's, that's what I've been told. Uh, and Arizona is a certain amount here, but I personally, having had a look at this, I, I just had difficulty where it takes, uh, four and a half hours to go over the contract for invoicing, uh, cost tracking, processing, coordination and paying it bill. Uh, you know, four and a half hours one day or one month, three hours the next, three hours the next, you know, I just, it just captures me as being a little excessive personally. But going back to the very start of this, back in January, I went to the county executive, had a conversation with him about the T V D funds and the investment response. And this comes from my previous experiences largely, uh, wherein we. And this comes from my previous experiences largely, uh, wherein we received a bond, uh, three hundred thousand dollars by the, and money was put into our account, at the county, as all special districts have their accounts in the county. And it came, I had to make a deposit to the company that was building our fire truck. And I made arrangements through the commissioner, who was voted on, and I went down to the county, presented them with the information so that you kept the warrants, so you could get the information out. But that, then I found out that, in fact, the county had invested around three hundred thousand dollars, uh, from the minute it went into our account. So the county arbitrarily and automatically invests all their money, which is not a, an unwisely thing to do, but being fairly known as the party chief and not having been at all the financial administration through the parking down previously, I made some inquiries and found out, yes, we could actually invest on them. So I said, great, well, can I have the money, the interest from back to January one, when, when the bond issue was put into the account? Well, no, you can't have that, you actually have to make a request that the money goes into a separate account to be invested. So we created this investment account within the fire district, gets to the state, continues on. All the money that paid up in there goes into an investment account and it yields a certain percentage. Back to nineteen ninety-two, that was probably five or six percent, now it's probably around one percent. So I asked Jack Lowe about investing the TDB funds because I know that the county invested their money, they're raking the benefit of the investment into the county general fund. Could we have to the benefit of the TDB fund? To which he responded, either you're going to pay for the administration contracts or you're going to get the interest, there's one or the other, you can't have both. Not really thinking that we were spending TDB funds or anything about that at the time, I just thought, okay, well, I'm just going to leave it alone. I came back, I reported back to this board and I said, okay, well, we'll just leave it for now, and we got off into twenty seventy-two. And until I received the email from, uh, Brian, uh, Walker, uh, and saw the cost of administering the contract, it didn't ring a bell, then it rang a bell and I thought, geez, I couldn't have.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, because not only are they getting the interest, but they're also charging us for contract administration. Uh, so as it sits right now, I sent a letter to, uh, Jack Lowe, essentially stating, uh, earlier this year when I met and I raised the issue of interest on the subject fund, TDBA. As I recall you indicated that the county would be happy to pay interest, the bonds we would pay the administration fees for the projects associated with use of those funds. Imagine my shock and surprise when I received an email from Public Works asking if Police PRCAC wanted to proceed with further work on the Tahiti drive, uh, contracts would follow on matrix attached, which had information. Uh, and separately, you know, to Brian Walker, I'm requesting an accounting of the county staff, time associated with the administration of these contracts, as has been asked of me by other members of the PRCAC. While I can appreciate the costs need to be recovered in the administrative contracts, these costs seem somewhat heavy-handed at between fifty and seventy-five percent of the contract values. Add to that the fact that the county is collecting one percent interest on that one million dollar TDB fund, and this seems to contradict my understanding of our conversation on this year. Could you please help me better understand this, so I can relay a reasonable explanation to other members of the PRCAC? The response was, I'm going to let Public Works versus the opportunity to discuss this with you and explain the bill. If you, if I, I heard it, I haven't been involved to this point on the detail, if I am still needed, find you after the discussion with them, please contact me. So it was out of a nice dismissal. Uh, I will be at a separate meeting on another issue with, um, Joe Otan and Brian Walker on Tuesday of next week. Uh, and I've also tried to make arrangements to set up a meeting with Jack Lowe, so I can speak with him again, I'll listen in person, uh, which I will do, and I will bring up the issues of Joe Otan. Because when I went to my meeting with Jack Lowe's, twenty minutes prior, I've been in a meeting with Joe Otan, I brought it up to him about the interest and he told me to talk to Jack Lowe. But Jack Lowe's sending it back to Joe Otan, so I'm going to try and have the same kind of meetings again and try and put the feet to the fire. It's the best I can do from here, uh, with my open support of the, the community and the rest of the PRCAC.
Could I say, um, two, two things come to mind? Um, one is, okay, apparently they're saying there's so much detail to work out when things first started, but that adds a lot of time to it. So that would lead me to assume that now that all there is is one invoice with backup paperwork once a month, that it shouldn't take that long to say, okay, it's good.
Exactly, I had exactly the same thought, even if we were being more legible, reasonable for last year, they shouldn't have some of those things ever.
I was supposed to think before, I was not assumed therefore that administrative costs should go down significantly.
Well, it did once in seventy-five percent, fifty percent.
Well, I said significantly.
Exactly.
Maybe, did you all mention last time, last week, that it might be possible to change the billing?
Yeah, so these are the sort of things that might be worth bringing up, you know, is that how can we minimize the administrative costs? Okay, so given that, you know, let's say administrative costs are a lot less, maybe a thousand bucks, you know, similar to what you're saying. Then obviously it's a better view to get the interest. But when they say, quote unquote, if you cover the administrative costs, who's the you they're talking about? Are you lying?
No, I'm not, I'm not sure if I was coming up with the TDB funds.
So we come out with TDB?
They said.
So what is doing now?
My, my understanding is that the TDB funds and the determination of how to spend TDB funds comes before the PRCAC, we make a recommendation that they do spend. And so from that, I would assume that we would be responsible for administering those funds.
Yeah.
And, and so that's why I think we should be getting interest. I mean, if they're going to charge us for the time anyway, then we shouldn't be getting interest. I, I certainly don't disagree with anybody's comments that these, these numbers are pretty inflated.
And all the truth, because none of us had any idea that these were.
I, I, in my law history, I wouldn't have imagined that they were in this kind of.
It would never mention.
And, and there was never a discussion about these costs when, I recall in a previous board, that we, we sat and had the discussion, um, to spend these places.
With the county or amongst?
Amongst ourselves.
Yeah.
We never got any input from the county, we knew that there was going to be these types of costs and I, again, I mean, when I was told ten thousand dollars versus the, you know, the expense, I didn't think that, you know, the administration of a ten thousand dollar contract would cost five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
You know, so it's.
I think it's coming with, with ten thousand, I was saying earlier, the county puts in for more money when we actually approve, we approved ten, they put twenty, they put ten, they put thirty, whatever, whatever the situation is, so they're, they're clearly backing, you know, they like Congress, why are we doing it?
Well, they've gone on to continue the contract, and again, this is the first we've heard from Brian Walker since the initial contract in twenty eighteen. This is the first that we've heard that there was a continuation of the contract in twenty nineteen, now that made well at the, uh, meeting at county council where that information was, was approved by them.
Really? But we can go. I, I was still at the very beginning that it wouldn't, as long as it was below a certain amount, I could get what that was, I think it was fifteen grand or something like that. As long as it was below a certain amount, and you didn't have to go before the council, it was good for five years. But apparently, without, I know, I mean, this approval of twenty grand and thirty grand, I didn't even know that.
They budgeted for it.
So that, that means that they're not asking for a council.
Well, I'm not a budgeting guy, I, you know, in a regard, I, I must say that ultimately, council is the final arbiter on, on, on the use of those funds.
Yeah.
You know, we might say yes, and they might say no, and that's just the way it's going to be. Uh, so they do have the final say and they are the people who are responsible, uh, for administering those funds, we're just taking advice, we can tell you so.
Well, you know, it's given, um, that they need to verify that his contractor's license registration, I actually managed to do that in thirty seconds and find out that he's been a licensed, bonded, insured contractor since two thousand and eleven. Well before this was even an issue, his bond is online, his insurance is online, and he's been registered with the LMI since two thousand and eleven. So the number of hours that they say were spent on that particular portion, you know, is a little ridiculous. And I actually went and spoke with him and he's actually, you know, not even sure about wanting to continue to do it because he said it is so micromanaging to the point that they're like, you need to be there Tuesday for two hours, you need to be Thursday for two hours. You know, very, so a lot of the hours that are actually being notated from Public Works.
It's been through a lot of money.
Are then micromanaging him.
If I can tell you, that's why it started out and, uh.
It's still like that.
It's not supposed to be.
He said it's still like that, every month it is, you're allowed to do this, then this is how many hours you can spend, you can't spend any time in December because you can't go over this amount, this is how many hours. He said it is actually tedious to the point, I even talked to his wife, Agan, and she said that.
Well, then that's, that's, that's playing, that's playing along and I can, I'll be happy to share with you the email string again, but that's fine too. That's the way it was for the first month, right?
Yeah.
They were, it was count porn terminals, you know?
Yeah.
And, and it was crazy and, and Tom said, look, I'm, I'm not going to do this, this is, this is ridiculous amount of bureaucracy, you know, they put a man on the moon, that's gross. And so, uh, so I had a conversation with Brian, I had a string of emails back and forth with Brian, because of Tom and Agan were also under the, under the, uh, understanding that, um, they had to, and they had to stick to the original, um, framework of, oh, well, you know, every Thursday you'll weed, right? And, you know, and every, every Friday you can, you know, you can cut trees, but you can't weed, you know, and then you can, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And, uh, so I, I stringed an email to Brian and saying that's unreasonable because we're dealing with weather, we're dealing with, sometimes you have to mow twice instead of once, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
It's gross.
And, and so I said, well, this is just a, these initial outlines of what will be done each month were just a, 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 just that, an outline, they had not, would had to be done that. And so he subsequently, uh, agreed to all of that. And so what it turned out now, and has been for the last, uh, four months, is they do whatever it is they need to do, all right? On a weekly basis, they say, okay, this is what we did, you know, this is okay, this is what we're, this is what we're, this is what we're going to be doing, this is fine, we do it. And so, yeah, I, I sign the bottom line, it's fine, next week, same thing again, this is, this is what we did, this is good, yeah, yeah, you did it, no, you missed the weed over there.
But then.
That's why it's going to you.
That's all going to me, none of that's going to the county.
What's your?
And A, none of that's going to the county.
No, I'm a junior attorney.
Yeah, but B, B, it was made quite clear to, to, and, and I totally agree with your, your, the way you, you drew the picture, it was horrible first month, month and a half. But, but since then, what's worked out is, is that they bring me these four little pieces of paper that say what they did each week, I sign at the bottom, you know, I take a look, you know, I'm yes, like, you know, to make everybody happy. At the end of the month, they have their invoice, all right, their outlines, it matches with the four things, I sign that, I make a PDF, a five page PDF, I have the whole thing, invoice, four weekly reports, and I, that gets sent to Brian.
That's it.
One, one PDF with invoice and report support, we turn it off.
Just.
Yeah.
You got the order down.
Initially, Brian wants it as to photograph.
We wanted it as to photograph, every time they worked, we had to arrange a meeting, to meet them on Tahiti and take pictures, before and after pictures.
That was magical.
Yeah.
And so I was, you know, I wouldn't happen to know.
Yeah, I remember talking to Agan that even still that she's had.
She's still smart from all that.
Well, she said there was multiple emails and this, and she had to fill out paperwork online and then there's site working work, and a lot of it was tied, they're building for this, micromanaging it all.
Total, total micromanaging, I, I have trust, you know, it's just like, well, it's.
So neither.
That was crazy.
Just.
And the original, when this came up, it was all about urgency, about two weeks ago, I hope, if you want it last week, and it's clear on the calendar this week, the original purpose was that there was some urgency from, I guess, from Public Works to get it off the council's agenda for a meeting that probably is working half a hour, it's about. Oh, sorry, anyway, my feeling, my feeling is the same this, this week as it was last week, that we should vote on this, we should, in my opinion, approve this while we continue to argue down here. We want the work, and I, I think we, well, I think the community supports the garden club, uh, promoting this work on Tahiti, and so we should support that by approving the funds, at whichever appropriate level, we should actually put it to ten or fifteen, whatever we should actually approve, or whatever they, whatever they put in that, in that, uh, note, I think I had thirteen, approving that they're, they're still too high in fees. But we should continue as they are, they continue to push the county to understand why they have to do this, why they can't do it, it's not reasonable.
But there's some more work being done this year.
All right, so this is.
Some more work being done this year.
Oh, yeah, this work will be done right.
Okay, so those invoices, don't.
Yeah, I think that's the point.
Yeah.
This is twenty twenty.
Yeah, twenty twenty. And it wouldn't, it wouldn't.
But we didn't ask for approval on the money, why didn't you approve on the twenty twenty?
Well, it happened.
Yeah, they didn't know that when they were asking at council.
Well, I know it's here, which is what I wanted, uh, I was trying to show them that it's a different area, it's something that's probably a part of the.
I think, uh, I think for the case of eighteen, I don't know why it's just over nineteen.
I would say it's a ghost.
Well, anyway, I'll, I'll, yes, sir.
At the, uh, public hearing, the first, the original hearing, when I stood up, I specifically asked if every year this expenditure was going to come before council, or if any other one would be, they crack throughout them. If there would have to be an open public hearing about it, and, or it needs to be in front of council, and they assured me that it would. And obviously, they dropped the ball because they should have, we're, we're applying for the third year now, and they didn't contact us at all about the second year.
Well, it's not really the third year, the, the first year was only like a couple of months, by the time they finished, maybe the word, it was in November.
Yeah.
Well, I would, I would say we, we all know where we all stand, we dislike the fees, we, I think we, I think we support the work, I would suggest that we vote to approve this or not, vote on approving it, whichever way people choose to vote. I understand there's a voting, maybe a voter like having their basis, maybe, maybe, uh, a test of, doesn't feel as you can vote, but if three of us happen to do it, we might not. Uh, we could, we could at least take a vote, I guess we could take a vote again next month, when we have more input, if it turns out to be negative this time, but I would suggest we vote on approving it.
I, I, I don't disagree with what you're saying, I don't think the garden club should be able to hospitalize the issues we have with the county executive and, and the county and the manner in which they're doing it. It's something we've got to address, it's something that I think we have to hold the, uh, county's feet to the fire, right? And as far as the thing that we need to involve getting funds together and hiring a lawyer to do it, I think we, we just need to get some better answers and get, if someone can give us some better answers and lower on that and, uh.
I think as a larger issue too, even though we're an advisory committee, you know, this is the committee in whatever forum it had, you know, membership it had, that allowed this to go on. And, and I think the committee that's responsible to the public has to look at where the funds were spent, was the job of them. And whatever manner that happens, I think that the committee did drop the ball and, and, and the county, yeah, working with us to maintain that. And, um, so it's an interesting thing about, I don't know if the Bible will show that, I know that we are our advisor committee, but we're more than that, we are the TDB funds administrator, in some way, we approve their use. Yeah, we don't raise the check.
We recognize you.
I think we recognize you. Yeah, they don't put anyone else to say, no, no, council's the plan, I'm saying it has to come from here to say, yes.
Yeah, traditionally, traditionally.
Exactly, so if there was part of something in the future, that we need to keep an oversight or something.
Can you not approve the payment of the invoices, but not the payment of the subsidies?
Well, I suppose they can do that, but I think that would fire you shooting the project with a foot.
Yeah.
I think, I think, I think we're, I would stick with the proposal, I think it's raw and on the table right now, it's going to be, uh, we vote to approve or disapprove of this plan, to, from the county, with these figures as they are, and we continue to push the county to understand.
Or you're going to, I'm, I'm.
Do it with prejudice.
Well, yeah, we're, well, the minutes will certainly reflect that nobody here is happy with the way you run it, and hey, there's plenty of people down there, so.
You can always, as the PRCAC, approve for the funds for the garden club and then announce to the community when it's going in front of county council. And have a group of people at county council saying, we want this money for the TDB to go to the garden club, but so you know, we have an issue with the county taking this much in fees, so that it can be at least open and the county then could maybe say, okay, we need to look at this.
I, I don't have a problem with that either, I think that's fine, and I think you should do that, I'm just going to make this statement, I think our best opportunity is to be able to get the interest on the TDB funds, I don't think we're going to be able to argue with these fees. We're going to probably end up arguing until we're blue in the face, I think we need to hold the county's feet to the fire down there, the best we can hold for is to at least get the interest on the TDB fund, so that they can offset some of these expenses.
It needs to be one of the other.
Right. Well, and please stop.
Anyway, I'd like to make a motion to be approved.
I will second the motion. For, and, uh, what was your description?
The one scan. With, with the, the task, that we continue to investigate.
We can have the task, your orders, continue to follow.
Yeah, I think I'm, 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 I want to make a court motion.
Which, which is, which is the, uh, the, uh, maple tree, is, that whole, that tree for the whole project here, garden club. It's another, this is going to reopen, so watch out, we can go with the, how I can be in the contract group right now, I mean. But it's TBD, so we're going to build this, like, oh, yeah.
Thank you.